Okay, let's call the meeting, the Santa Fe County Planning Commission to order Thursday, January 7th, 2019 at 4:00 PM. Call to order. Roll call.
(inaudible)
Oh, here, I'm sorry. Here.
(inaudible).
Here.
(inaudible).
Here.
(inaudible).
Here.
Thank you. Let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic of the British Federation, one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible in every state and every country.
Okay, first I'd like to start off by introducing our newest member, J.J. Gonzalez over here. I sat with him when the Planning Commission at the county was called the CDRC, so I know his work, he's an excellent person. Also, the other member that was appointed, his name's Fred, Fred Raznick, he's not here with us today, I'd like to welcome him aboard as well. Okay, we have an election today, so we have election of the Chair and the Vice Chair. Do we have any discussion or any nominations?
Mr. Chair, I want to make, I'd like to make a motion to keep the standing Chairman that we have and our Vice Chair.
Okay, you want to keep it? You want to keep the same as it is? Leroy?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a second on that?
I'll second.
Second by J.J. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
(inaudible).
Mr. Chair members, it's not something I'm clear about, I don't think it's clearly addressed, but it's always a good practice to break down your motion. So you're electing members to two specific offices, so I would recommend that two motions be offered.
Okay, so the first motion is for election of the Chairman. All in favor of keeping myself, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the next nomination is for Vice Chair. Do we have any nominations?
I nominate Mr. Katz.
Mr. Katz has been nominated for Vice Chair, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, carries, we have the same setup as last time, as 2018, thank you. Okay, approval of agenda, do we have any changes to the agenda, Vicki?
Mr. Chair, there are no amendments or tabled or withdrawn items on the agenda.
Thank you. Okay, approval of the minutes, do we have any discussion of the minutes, Mr. Katz?
Not the minutes, no, I'm sorry.
Any, okay, do we have a motion for approval of the December 2018 minutes?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. Okay, consent, agenda, final orders, do I have a motion?
I have a question.
Okay, Mr. Katz?
Looking at the proposed findings and conclusions, I have a problem. On page, paragraph 56, the Commission finds that the setback requirement in section 717 511 apply only to the placement of fill. I don't think that's anything that we did decide, in fact, I think we expressed the exact opposite thought, and it was only because the applicant agreed to move it back 25 feet from the edge of the Arroyo that it was approved the way it was. And so I think that these findings and conclusions need to be reworked.
Mr. Chair, so if, we will go back and look at revising the final order, so if the Planning Commission would like to table it, we'll bring it back again next month.
Okay, do I?
Move to table.
Okay, do I have a second to table case number, consent agenda, do I have a motion to table on the consent agenda, final order, case number APP 18-5130?
I think you had a motion and I'll say.
Did I have a motion? Okay, okay, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes, thank you. Okay, let's start with new business. Case SVAR 18-5230, Don Abriel variance. Nathan, please proceed.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. On December 13th, 2018, this application was presented to the hearing officer for consideration. The hearing officer recommended denial of the application as memorized in the findings of fact and conclusions of law written order. The hearing officer found that the evidence presented by the applicant did not establish that all three of the variance review criteria were met. Specifically, the applicant did not submit evidence establishing that strict application of the code would result in peculiar and exceptional practical difficulties or exceptional and undue hardship on the owner. Furthermore, the hearing officer found that the particular difficulty set out in the application and the testified to by the applicant grant agent involved use of special construction techniques and materials but do not result in particular difficulties that are peculiar and exceptional or exceptional and undue hardship on the owner as required by the Sustainable Land Development Code. Staff and the hearing officer believe that the applicant can have both a sustainable and energy efficient home on this track without exceeding height limitations. Approval of this variance could set a precedent for future homes in the area, therefore staff recommends denial of this variance request. If the decision of the Planning Commission is to recommend approval, staff recommends the following conditions be imposed. May I state the conditions?
Yes, you may.
One, development must comply with all other design standards set forth in the SLDC and community district. And the, two, the development must comply with fire prevention requirements and conditions. And three, the applicant must obtain development permits from the county before any construction can take place on the property. Mr. Chair, I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Nathan. Does the Commission have any questions, Nathan? Mr. Katz?
Nathan, I noticed that there are no real elevations to show what the design that is required is going to look like, and there are incomplete floor plans, there's no floor plan at the second floor, and I'm just wondering how we can go forward without having a really complete application.
Commissioner Katz, the intent from staff was not to put an undue hardship on the applicant by having them design plans if a variance wasn't going to be approved. The applicant has provided some additional drawings today that he's going to present, but we did not want to put the applicant through that expense if the variance was not granted.
I appreciate your sensitivity to that issue, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Katz. Any other questions of staff? Okay, I have a couple. Has staff received any concerns from the San Marcos community organization in writing?
We have not.
No? Okay. Do you know if the site is visible from State Road 14?
Mr. Chair, I do not believe, it's a fairly big parcel, I believe there's a natural berm, also some topography that shields it from 14, it's definitely visible from Dutch Road, but I don't, I don't believe that it is, and we did not require a visual impact analysis at this point.
Okay, another question I have is that, did you guys, one thing that I'm concerned about is, okay, you have a flat roof, now you're changing to a pitched roof, you're changing the drainage patterns. So at one time, the canalis used to be on one side and you're draining to one side, now you do a pitched roof, you're changing the pitch, so now you're going to have drainage on both sides. So are you guys going to require a revised gradient drainage plan or a drainage gradient drainage plan?
If it is the Planning Commission's decision to approve, all that would be ironed out during the permit process. There again, we didn't want to get into too much detail, cause the applicant an undue hardship for cost of hiring a civil engineer, architect, to design something that may not happen.
And, okay, my last question, could you explain the three-foot allowance for solar panels?
Yes, so the SLDC allows a three-foot allowance on top of the max height of an area. So additionally, if you have a 24-foot height restriction, you can, if you put it above, basically on the roof line, you get an additional three feet past that 24 allowance.
Mr. Katz?
What was the "it"?
The array itself.
Okay, so this allows the arrays to be above the limit but not the roof?
Exactly.
Thank you.
Just the array to exceed the three-foot maximum height allowance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan. Okay, any other questions of staff? Okay, is the applicant present?
Yes, sir.
You may make your presentation.
Chair Gonzalez, Commission members, my clients have...
Excuse me, could you speak up a little bit more?
The owners of the residence have a desire to be environmentally conscious, and eventually to be completely off the grid and have electric vehicles and generate enough electricity to heat their home and provide domestic hot water and run two electric vehicles. They also have a concern about the aesthetics of a flat roof and their home as it is now, which was built in 1973, it's an adobe home, it has a Vega and Wood Structured Roof with about an inch or two of pumice on top of it, not much slope and exposed ductwork on top of the roof. There's a photograph that's taken from the neighboring property to the north, and it looks, it sits down from Highway 14 and from all the neighboring properties. It's hard to see the photo, I could pass it around. This is basically a sketch tracing of this, and as you can see, mechanically, it's ductwork sitting on top of the roof, they're visible and uninsulated. This is our concept below of the roof that they would like to have with the solar panels on it. We had neighborhood meetings, none of the neighbors were concerned about their views, and they generally were in favor of the project overall. It's not what they want, but I would like to address staff's supposition that a new roof that's insulated and houses the ductwork could be, could be built within the height limit.
Take the microphone with you.
I have a couple of these, so I could hand them to you and you could pass them around. This outlines what I see as the minimum construction that would encompass the ductwork and insulate the roof, which needs to be done, obviously. That diagram, it's a 22-foot span in the space on the second floor, and that, what that diagram shows is taking the existing parapet off and replacing it with an eight-inch concrete bond beam to support a new roof structure, the minimum structure required would be 18-inch truss joists at 16 inches on center. And then to achieve R38 to meet the International Energy Code, 2009 Energy Code, which is currently in force, would be seven inches of rigid insulation. At a 23-foot span would require a six inches of slope to meet the minimum quarter inch per foot slope for any low-slope roofing. The, you know, roofing companies, the warranties aren't in effect unless roofing continues up 12 inches up the parapet, as many of you may know. And also, the International Building Code, section 705.11.1, requires 30-inch high parapets. So even without the 30-inch high parapet, just to reach the top of the roofing, where I believe it's 24'7" is what it's on there on the diagram, and then 26'1" to the top of the parapet, I don't see how we could encompass the ductwork and insulation with a proper roof slope with the structure, with the existing construction, even with a flat roof. And again, a low-slope roof with parapets is not what the applicant wants in any way, but I thought I would address the fact that it, that the staff said it could be built within the height limit, I don't believe it can.
Okay, so this isn't actually the rough section you're going to use, right? This is not the one you're going to use?
It's not the one we would like to use, no. We would like to do a pitched roof with trusses and put the mechanical and the insulation in the attic space.
Okay, thank you. What else? Is that it?
The owners of the house would like to address you as well.
Sure. Make sure you swear yourself in.
(inaudible).
So, good afternoon. The right way is to say Chairman and Board, I didn't notice that. If the, part of the idea is that the neighbors approve or don't approve, I have a couple of emails from neighbors who were saying they wished us luck, they hope the roof goes through, I can show you the emails if you want, but one of the things that is not really obvious is when you drive onto this property, you're high, coming off of 22, and then as soon as you get into the driveway, you're looking down onto the roof, and it's ugly. It's a beautiful piece of property, it's a beautiful home, built for Bob Dylan in the 70s, and it has this ugly roof, and to put the solar panels on it would make it uglier. Even if we could get the insulation, you would be looking at the back end, because you're looking south there, you would be looking at the back end of the solar, whereas if it's on a pitched roof, when you're looking at the property, you're looking at only the nice line of the roof, and the solar panels would be on the south facing, so, for your consideration.
Thank you. I am pretty familiar with this site, what I remember is that I think that property is maybe a little bit visible from the turnoff to Galistale, in that downhill stretch down there?
For like a quarter of a mile, when you take that dip, just before the dip, you can just see the house.
Right. Okay, thank you. Okay, would you like to speak as well?
(inaudible). My name is Derek Roth, I'm married to Don Abriel. I'm passionate and emotional about this, so it's something I care about deeply. I went to the meeting a month ago with the hearing officer and presented a short version of our reasons and concerns and desires. When the report came out, it said that no one testified in favor of the proposal. I was there, I testified. It said that no reasons were given beyond the energy conservation question. I gave a lot of reasons. Now, I spoke with Nathan this morning, and he said, well, you're the applicant, so that's why, we just leave that out normally. But to me, it seemed like both my presence and my reasons were not acknowledged, not addressed in any way. So I wrote them up in even greater detail. I don't know if you're wanting to take the time for hearing these sorts of things from me, but to me, they really matter. This is the last house I ever expect to live in or at least do anything significant on.
Sure, go ahead and proceed.
Okay, thank you. So we're talking about a house in the San Marcos district, it's a very diverse area, as you all know, I'm sure. Right now, the San Marcos district is having a series of public meetings which are looking at revising the San Marcos overlay, and I've attended one of those meetings. I was unaware of the process until shortly after this meeting in December, I'm not sure why, I read my mail, Don reads her mail, we didn't see anything about it. But I've attended a meeting, and I understand a little more about the process now, and there are some things in that document process that I think support our goals. Specifically, a statement in the document is, "We want to encourage the use of renewable energy and sustainable land use patterns to conserve natural resources, enable rural lifestyle, set an example for education, sustainability, and resource management." That's what we're trying to do, and we think we're very much in line with that, and we think our design addresses it better than the flat roof proposal. There are also a couple of other quotes I'd like to make from that, that one of the goals and actions in this plan that is currently emerging from the San Marcos overlay project is to, I'm quoting, "Review design guidelines to encourage as much use of renewable energy and smart land development patterns as possible, and explore options to remove barriers for renewable energy projects." So these are two things that are, right now, for us, a barrier, to get the solar panels that we want and other aspects of water harvesting and other things that we want. We think we're going to be more successful with the pitched roof than with the flat roof. Now, you mentioned the concerns about a regrading of the site and diverted water. We currently take all of the water from the roof into ducts that lead to an underground cistern, and that, those flows from the second floor, which is where we're putting the roof, go on to the roof of the first floor and then out of canalis and into this system for taking the water into the cistern. So that would not change whether we have the flat roof or the pitched roof, but we would prefer the pitched roof.
Excuse me, could you explain that a little bit more? So you have a flat roof, and the water goes to one side of the house where the canalis are at, right? So now you're putting a pitched roof?
Well, it's supposed to be three sides of the house.
Oh, does it, three sides?
Yes.
Okay, so now you're putting a pitched roof, so now you're going to, it's going to be forced to two sides, right? Oh, no, you're going to have the four-sided roof on the, okay, okay.
Right.
Continue.
And so each of the current spills from this top story go on to the first floor, and from there to a secondary set of canalis, they go down into catchment basements into underground pipes that go into a cistern.
You said that the house is kind of old, is the first-floor roof going to be able to carry the load of the water coming from the new roof?
Well, again, in my view, we're not changing the amount of water that is falling onto the first floor, because everything that's hitting the second floor now goes on to the first floor, and afterwards, whatever roof style is approved, all of that water will still go on to this first floor in exactly the same way that it has since the building was constructed.
Okay. Continue.
So then there's another quote in here that I would like to bring to your attention, which I think addresses what we're trying to do. This is actually from the approved 2015 Land Use Plan. It says, "A community plan is intended to permit communities to recommend adoption of particular land use regulations based on the needs and goals of the community," and then there's a section I'm leaving out, and then finishes, "and to subsequently update plans as necessary due to changing circumstances." That's where we think we are. I've been trying to learn, I'm an amateur, I'm not a professional, but I've been trying to study everything I can, both about the specifics of this situation, and more generally, for the last 20 years, I've been trying to learn about sustainable building and energy conservation. This morning, I learned from Nathan that this regulation, the height limit is of 24 feet, comes from 1981. That's 37 years ago, 38 years ago, if you want to include 2019. So we've learned a lot, our views of sustainability have changed a lot in that time, and we have a tremendous amount of building stock in this country, but specifically our house, that needs a lot of help to reach the kind of conservation levels that are considered normal, that are in the code right now. So a lot of people need to make a lot of changes, and this particular limit is difficult for everyone if they want to make their house substantially more energy efficient, particularly for us. I mean, we're here now, we're not, I'm not saying we're worse than other people, but we want to do the best we can. We don't want to do what was great for 1981, we want to do what's great for 2019 and 2029. So we want to do more than the minimum, we want to do better than the least we can do. So one of the other things that I note is that there are, we are zoned as residential rural, or rural residential. Within a quarter of a mile of our house is rural, and only slightly further is rural fringe. The height requirements for those two kinds of parcels, which are not our immediate neighbors but quite close to us, are 50 feet. So we are limited to less than half of those height limitations that it would apply to close neighbors, and we'd like to just get a little bit more than the minimum. As I said, there's tremendous diversity in the San Marcos area, lots of houses already exceed these limits, they were grandfathered in, I presume. Lots of houses need help, they need to do something, maybe something like us, maybe something like what we're asking for. Another aspect is that plenty of houses are built way up on the ridge lines, and they're very visible, lots of them are beautiful, many are in the valleys, some are in the middle, we're in the middle. If you approve our request for this height variance, our ridge line will still be substantially lower than our immediate neighbor to the north, our immediate neighbor to the south, and roughly the same as our closest neighbor to the east. So although we might have a tape measure heights greater than the current limit of 24 feet, we would not be sticking up abnormally compared to our neighbors or blocking their So one of the other things that, oh, did you have a question?
No, go ahead.
One of the other things that I've discovered and think about in trying to understand where we are and what we can do is that the International Residential Code, which applies mostly to the entire country, of course, there are local variations and increased limitations, but it would support this. We would have no need for a variation if that was the code that's in force. The issue is because of this mysterious number of 24 feet from 1981. I asked Nathan, I asked five other members of the staff, and have looked online to try and find out, why does that number there? What does it do? How does it improve the community? How does it improve sustainability? No one has been able to give me any information, so I can't respond to whether it's a good thing or a bad thing, or whether my views and desires are getting, going against something valuable, or whether it's just kind of a curiosity. But I would love to see it not apply to us, and us to allow us to have a normal roof on this house. For more than 100 years, one of the most common northern New Mexico building styles has been a two-story house with a pitched roof. The building immediately north of us here, in this town, is a beautiful two-story house with a pitched roof. The next house up, the very same thing. Those houses couldn't be built if they were on our property. I think they're gorgeous houses, I don't think anyone's trying to knock them down here in Santa Fe, but we can't do what they did, and we think it's a good thing if people were allowed to make two-story houses with pitched roofs. It is the most energy-efficient general house plan used in this country in terms of maintaining the smallest footprint, well, a cube is for building purpose pretty close to the smallest surface area for internal volume, and a pitched roof is very effective for putting in the mechanicals and heating and cooling ducts and things of those sorts. So that's what we think we want to do, and we think we have good reason for trying to do that.
Okay, is that it?
No, I will stop if you want me to, but I've thought about this.
Try and wrap it up now if you can.
Okay. So in the discussion by the staff, only the energy issue has been mentioned, so I'd like to say that we've got many other things we care about. Aesthetics is a very big one. Even if we use the variance that, or whatever it's called, of raising the panels above the roof line, that would just make the aesthetic... the roof line, that would just make the aesthetics worse, as has already been mentioned. We'd like to keep the panels below the roof line. Energy efficiency, the current code says, is it R39? But we're already in 2019, the 2018 International Residential Code, although it hasn't been adopted here yet, already specifies R49. Every issue of the code, the numbers go up. So again, we don't want to aim for the lowest that happens to be currently legal, we want to aim for what the whole nation is aiming for, better and better, higher and higher numbers, and I don't think we can do that with the foam. We can do it affordably with loose fill insulation under the pitched roof. To protect the walls, overhangs are very good, to protect the doors, to protect the windows. That's hard to do with a pitched, a flat roof. You can, it looks weirder and weirder the farther out you extend the overhangs. More than just the protection of the walls and doors and windows is the views. We have great views, like many places. We like to look out. Well, most of the time, the sun is blasting in, the primary windows are to the west and the south on the second floor. We have to close the curtains on most of every day through three-quarters of the year. If we had decent overhangs, we would be able to see the beautiful outdoors and not be limited by the sun coming in. We'd have solar gain when we wanted it in the winter, and we would have shading to cut down on the unwanted gain and the extra heat load that it produces currently. Okay, I guess I can stop there.
Okay. Just, you have, you know, you have your national codes and you have your local codes. Your national codes, they set a basic, they set it up basically, and then the individual communities can come in and they can become, have more stringent codes, and that's what's happened over here, the city and the county do that all the time. They, you know, they have the national codes and the city codes are more stringent, and then you have overlays, and all that stuff adds up, and that's how you get to the restrictions.
Thank you, and thank you.
Thank you. Let me see, does the commission have any questions of the applicant?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Shepherd.
I have a question for the applicant. Is this working? Can you hear me? What type of solar system? Describe the solar system you're talking about, please.
So we would like to put photovoltaic panels and potentially also solar thermal panels on the proposed pitched roof so that we can move towards 100% of our space heating needs from those two types of solar collectors. All of the details haven't been worked out, in part because we don't know exactly what kind of roof we're going to be able to have.
Are you gonna use the photovoltaic to spin the meter backwards, or you're going to put them into batteries and be independent?
At some point, batteries may be reasonable. We already have a rec contract with PNM and are already putting some energy, some electricity into the system. At the moment, batteries are still very expensive in terms of kilowatt hour, but the time, I think, is coming soon when it will be reasonable to choose home storage, and we wouldn't have to be grid tied at that point, although we might still want to contribute excess electricity to the grid so that other people could use it.
The second floor, if you put the pitched roof on it, how does it change the interior of the second floor?
In our view, it would only change it in regards to the overhangs, which would give, as I already mentioned, the shading from unwanted sun and the chance to look out the windows more, but it would not change the square footage of the interior space in any way.
The, I've been off the grid for over 20 years, and I'm completely off the grid with solar and wind power. I live about 10 miles south of you. I did not put my solar, I built a house two years ago, and I did not put the solar panels on my roof for two reasons. First is, I was really reluctant to put any holes in my roof, because over time with this sun, you never know how sealant dries out on and on. The second thing is, you mentioned the 35 degrees, that's the nominal, but if you put the solar panels on the ground, like I did with an array, you can change it up 15 for the summer and down 15 for the winter from that 35, and you get extremely better performance out of your solar panels. Also, it's easier in case there's any type of maintenance or whatever that you have to do. So I'm wondering why you're not looking at putting a couple posts in the ground and adding a solar array at ground level instead of up on your roof?
Well, our land is not flat. It's got a lot of erosion from centuries presumably, so we do not have really any superb flat spaces. We do have spaces where we could put the solar panels, but we're hesitant to use up some of our best flat-ish land to have solar panels when we feel like, although the roof is maybe not perfect in every sense, it's certainly got lots of pluses. We have a certain number of surviving juniper trees, almost all of the pinones dried, we have just half a dozen of those, but many of the places where we might put the solar panels would require cutting down some of our few remaining, relatively few remaining trees. So again, we'd prefer to have the panels up above all of the shadow concerns and protect our current vegetation.
Well, you know, you don't need a flat surface, all you need is a clear view to the south for solar panels. So you could put it on a slope where you, it's not useful for anything else, and you could sink a couple posts in the ground and put your solar there, as long as there's a clear view to the south.
Well, there's some advantage to having a certain amount of exposure to the east and west as well. Sun does rise in the east instead of in the west. Okay, so you don't have any interest in?
Well, if you do some more research, you'll find that they always say, put your panels true north, not magnetic north, and that's the compromise unless you're gonna put a tracking system on it that allows it to go from east to west, you put it true nor, truth south, I mean.
Indeed, we've talked to Positive Energy and several other solar contractors, and they have taken measurements, and they have said, well, this, you've got south exposure, but in the morning, that tree is gonna block your panel, it's gonna cut your production, in the evening, you're gonna lose production from this tree over here. So it's not that we couldn't do that, but we've talked to solar professionals, and they have made the recommendation that there's some advantages to not doing it that way.
Positive Energy is a good company, I know them well. When I look at, your current height is 21 feet?
Yes.
And when I look at the calculations, you could request a minor deviation of 10% above the 24, which would get you to 26 feet 4 inches, which means you have 5 feet 4 inches of additional height you could do for insulating your roof without a pitched roof and still be within the county requirements. Have you considered that?
Yes, and our architect went through some of our thinking on that, that in his view, we couldn't, still couldn't quite get in under the wire, although we would be closed. But it does not meet any of the other reasons why we want to do this roof. And so for us, we're passionate about making our house more like we want it and better. If someone says, well, you could build it completely different than you want, and you could put your solar panels in a completely different place than you want, and you could do all the things different than what you want, that's all true. But as a homeowner, I think I and most homeowners would say, we're not trying to build somebody's house, others, someone else's house the way they want their house, we're trying to do a really good job of building the house the way that we think it will be the best for our neighbors and ourselves and for the future. So I admit, there are plenty of alternatives that we don't like that could also work, but we would like to do something that we do like. You know, it's, I don't know what we will do, but I think for the majority of the public, if it's even possible to get what they're looking for, they simply won't invest at all, and will end up with more housing stock for longer that is substandard, because it doesn't make sense to people to put a whole lot of money into getting something that they don't look like, don't want, and doesn't look like what they're looking for.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd. Mr. Katz? Oh, JJ?
I've got a couple of questions. I saw a photograph of your residence, do you have existing solar panels on part of the house right now?
We do. We have some panels up near the corner of our property on trackers, and we have some panels that are on the green, flat greenhouse roof that feed our electric hot water heater so that our hot water, domestic hot water, is for the most part, except for the last few weeks when we had so many cloudy days, we get all of our hot water heated by photovoltaic electric. So that's been part of our commitment to try and reduce our carbon footprint and our fossil fuel use. We want to continue that and expand it until we have no fossil fuel use.
And the other question I have, the lower photograph there, the sketch, is that, what orientation is that? Is that south facing, or what's the direction of that?
This corner is by north, northeast. West is over here, this is north, so it doesn't sit precisely oriented towards the compass. This is mostly east, slightly to the north, and so the south side, you can't see it all at this drop. I'm sorry, should I repeat that?
On which surface of that pitched roof do you plan to install your collectors?
This would be on the south face, so in the hip roof.
Is it south facing, or is it southeast, or what's, what orientation?
I think it's about 6 degrees west of south.
Within 6 degrees?
Yeah.
Because I, you know, I don't see the orientation here, because the solar panels you, that are existing now, how are they oriented? Is that towards the south, southeast, or?
They are also at the same angle that we would be looking at the new ones, in terms of the ones that are on the greenhouse roof. They are aligned with the walls of that addition to the house, which is the greenhouse, so they're a little bit off south, and then the ones up at the higher end of the property are on two-axis trackers, so they follow the sun from sunrise to sunset.
Yeah. The other question I have, I see on the photograph on NBA 12, you have duck work on your roof right now.
Yes.
Is that correct?
And also the heating and cooling device itself, it's a combination air conditioner and heater that sits up on the roof.
Mounted on the roof?
Yes.
Okay. That heats what part of the house?
It heats and cools the entire upstairs.
Up, just the upstairs?
Yes.
What do you use downstairs?
We have no cooling downstairs, we have a second aging gas, propane-fired furnace with forced air downstairs.
Yeah. Now, do you utilize any passive solar on the south-facing sides of your house? I see some windows there, but I don't see any large windows like for passive solar.
No, the house was poorly designed by someone who didn't understand solar and much about architecture, and so particularly on the first floor, the chances for passive solar are poor. On the second floor, they're slightly better, but the south-facing wall, well, it's not a square, I don't know if that's visible in any of the documents you have.
Well, I see that it's not a square at all, so I would say it's difficult to do a flat surface that allows a lot, solar panels. The other question I have?
Well, excuse me if I may, the roof will be square or rectangular, so it will make it much easier to do approximately south-oriented panels. But the upper story itself would take a lot of modification to make passive solar particularly strong there. What we get is the wrong solar of the big west windows pulling in way too much heat most of the year, but the south, the wall is broken up into three different sections and three different angles, so we're limited there unless we ask for even more dramatic remodeling of the second floor.
Yeah. The other question I have is that, I read here that you were talking about solar shingles. Is that just something different other than solar panels?
Yes, there are three companies that we know of that make shingle-type roofing materials where the shingle itself is also generating photovoltaic electricity, and so that they can be placed on a roof as really part of the waterproofing and part of the roof, and therefore, there's no racks, there's no penetrations, those were mentioned earlier by Mr. Shepherd, and you can generate a certain amount of electricity that way. The ones from Tesla, which we have thought about using, may or may not be available by the time we get to building this. We have no idea when we're gonna be allowed to build this, if at all. There are two other companies that do make them that are available now, so that is an option we're considering, but until we know really where we stand, we don't know whether it makes sense to try and include those or to include regular solar panels on top of a metal roof or some other kind of roof.
The other question I have is, you request eight and a half, 8 feet 6 inches higher than the 24 that's allowed by the code, and you say that going 8 foot 6 to 32 feet 5 inches or so will give you a 35-degree slope. Okay, and if you go to what is allowed, I think 29 feet 4 inches is what you can administratively, you know, get. What is the difference in the gain from 35 degrees if you go 3 feet lower to 29 feet 4 inches? What would be the difference in degrees? Would it be like 30 degrees or something, or, and what percentage would be less than what you can gain? And Mr. Shepherd said in the summertime, the sun migrates higher in the sky, 35% grade is maybe ideal for the winter months, but in the summer months, you know, he tilts his collectors 15 degrees to get, you know, the higher gain from the sun that's higher in the sky. So I was wondering, have you figured out the difference in gain between 29 feet 4 inches and 32 feet 4, 6 inches?
Well, again, I've spoken with Positive Energy and some other solar contractors about this. I don't have a precise answer to your question. They say that 35 degrees is optimum for year-round gain. It's certainly true that it's less gain in the summer and more in the winter, but the needs are less in the summer and more in the winter. It's in the winter where we have more clouds, we have, all of our heating needs are in the winter, and I think with properly insulated roof, our cooling needs will be relatively modest. Nonetheless, I think if we could go to 29, 29 4, is that what you're saying?
Yes, that's what you're allowed administratively.
Yeah, if that's true, I had not heard.
Well.
Get the roof line that high, but if we could, that would be better news than I've heard up to now.
Well, maybe I misspoke, because they allow you to go 20, 26 feet 4 inches, 10% above 24 feet, so that's 26 feet 4 inches. So that's what you're allowed, and then they say any collectors can go 3 feet higher than that. And I was wondering if, maybe staff can answer my question, can the roof go 29 feet 4 inches? Just the collectors can go 3 feet higher than?
Mr. Chair, Commission Member Gonzalez, that's correct, the roof line would be limited to 26 feet 4 inches, and then the arrays themselves could go up an additional 3 feet.
Okay, well, thank you.
And as my wife mentioned, we think that part of the favor we're doing to ourselves and our neighbors is to not have an ugly roof, and having them look at the backs of the solar panels if they extended 3 feet above the ridge line would be suboptimum from our point of view and theirs.
Yeah, the other comment I have is, you know, you have alternatives. You know, this is one, one, the alternative that you want is to raise the roof to 32 feet 4 inches, and the problem I have with that is that, you know, San Marcos did this code, and countywide, they have height limits of 24 feet.
Not really. They have countywide for rural residential, but as I mentioned, our nearby neighbors have limits of 50 feet, so it's not uniform, it's variable. We are in a zone that is 24 feet, but it's not like everywhere has that limit. In fact, the majority of the county land near us has a 50-foot limit, we just don't happen to fit under those regulations.
Well, that I wasn't aware of, because I know the code says 24 feet countywide, you know, that's a limitation.
Really true.
And the thing is that, you know, what you're trying to do here, you know, I admire you trying to do a solar array, go passive solar, go, you know, renewable energy and stuff, but the biggest problem I have is that, you know, what, if they grant you 32 feet 4 inches, you know, that opens the door for everybody that wants to do something different than what you, not with your intentions, but something just different, because they say, well, so-and-so is able to go 32 feet, why can't I? You know, this has a lot of countywide impacts. It's not just one residence here or one residence there. This is a, sets a precedent for, you know, county- This is a, sets a precedent for, you know, countywide, you know, impact.
Yeah, and I think that would be a very good thing. We have a big problem, even the President's Council, and we know what the President thinks like, said that global emissions of greenhouse gases is the most serious problem facing us. Thirteen federal agencies released on November twenty-third of two thousand and eighteen a report saying we have to be very, very aggressive in cutting greenhouse gas emissions. There are hundreds, thousands of houses in this county that need major upgrades. And putting pitched roofs on them would be a greatest ability to help fight this worldwide ecological problem. So from my point of view, I recognize that you're not sitting where I'm sitting in this. But from my point of view, it would be great for everyone to put pitched roofs on and increase insulation and decrease our global greenhouse gas emissions rather than sticking with a curious number that makes it impossible to do what New Mexicans have done for over a hundred years and comes from nineteen eighty-one and no one can explain why it's there.
Thank you. No further questions.
All right, Mr. Katz?
Yeah, I'm a little confused as to the orientation of the roof that you want to put on. You say in that sketch, the facade we're looking at is not, but is it east, northeast?
So the largest side that we can see here with the three windows above the portal is mostly east, but slightly north of east. So it's within, I'm not certain, roughly six degrees, I think, of east.
And on the other side, which unfortunately you don't show us a picture of, what is the roof going to look like there?
Well, the roof, while the house itself has this funny truncated and notched octagon, half-octagon shape, the roof will be rectangular. It will extend over the corners and the odd parts of the shape so that one complete line of the roof will face almost south. One will face almost east, one will face almost north, and one will face almost west. It will be bigger with overhangs to cover the oddities of the current floor plan and to provide good shading and overhangs for the reasons that I mentioned earlier.
Okay, I'm looking at the photo that's attached, the aerial photograph that shows your, the solar panels you currently have on the greenhouse, you said?
Okay, so that's not this photo, that's a different photo.
No, it's the one that's in the materials. It's a probably a satellite photo or something.
Can I take a quick glance at it so I know what you're referring to?
This, showing the solar collectors.
Yes.
They, they are facing not directly in front of the flat part of the roof, they're facing the angled part. Are they not rigged up south-facing?
No, they are closer to south than that short section. South is in between this plane and this plane. And these are facing in between those two planes. So they're closer to south, although they're still not perfectly south.
I tried to draw a line that seemed to reflect what north was based on the solar panels. And it's pretty much what would be the ridge line of the roof that you're proposing, wouldn't it?
The, the north and south? The ridge line is near north and south, slightly to the west, at one end slightly to the east.
So are you going to?
North and south is close to there.
Mm-huh.
So it's close to the ridge line, but not right on it.
So are, what angles are the panels going to be at? Aren't they going to be flat against the roof?
That was our thought, that they would be at.
Then they'll be facing west?
No, they would be facing, that, that plane, that plane of that quarter of the roof, this is not a gable roof, this is a hip roof.
So it's just that one hip?
So that, that one hip is facing, is tilted at thirty-five degrees for optimum collection and is facing pretty close to south.
Okay. How many panels do you expect to put on that?
I don't remember the calculations. Paul, do you have a sense of how many square feet we've got on that plane?
It's probably about five hundred square feet of panel that could get on that plane.
Have you considered other locations on your roofs to put panels?
Yes. Again, we spoke with Positive Energy and, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting the other name of the company that we've had come out and talk to us. Well, Solar Logic, is that? Solar Logic and, what's Rob's company?
Solar Wise.
Solar Wise. So all three of those people have visited the site and offered their opinion on what we might do. The structure of the second floor blocks much of the first floor where we might put the panels on that first floor level, first floor roof, in that, there is, there, well, I guess there is the portal, we could potentially do something there. But the, the main part of the roof, we have the solar panels for our water heating now on the greenhouse area. And there's a little bit of space there facing to the south. So we could add some additional panels between the house and those panels that are on the greenhouse. But the, the rest of the roof would be blocked roughly until midday by the house itself. And so it would get solar in the, from eleven or noon on towards the evening. So there is some space for that. But it wouldn't be nearly as good as the clear exposure of the pitched roof on the second floor.
I, I guess we're at a real disadvantage because you don't give us drawings that show much of this. But is the room to the far south the greenhouse? The one that has the large panels that you see in the photo?
Yes, that is our greenhouse.
And then there is, right in front of the house, portal?
Yes.
And then there's a room between those two rooms?
Yes, there is a spare bedroom between those two.
And that spare bedroom is not blocked by the upper story at all, is it, from the sun?
Well, if we, it is partially covered by the second floor. I would guess about half the room's area is covered by the second floor. If we cut holes in the, the roof, light would go into that spare bedroom. But at the moment, it's blocked in, pretty much entirely by the greenhouse as far as the southern exposure. There is no window in that.
It is due west of the greenhouse. Why is it blocked by the greenhouse?
Wait a minute, we're not talking about the same room.
This is the greenhouse? And you have two panels there?
This is the greenhouse. We have two rows of panels there.
Right. And then this is the spare bedroom between the greenhouse and the portal, right?
Yeah, so there's, there is a window that is blocked, that is shaded until afternoon by the greenhouse. So these windows.
I'm talking about roof. Putting panels on your roof. Why couldn't you put more panels on the greenhouse, two rows of panels on the sunroom, three rows of panels on your portal, all facing due south?
I guess we could.
Insulation, what is the, go back now. What is the, the ductwork for? What does it do?
It moves heat or cold air from the heating plant, the HVAC unit, to all parts of the upper story. So it goes to the bathroom area and three locations in the main room, the, there's also a, a large walk-in closet. And the air return is in the stairway.
And how does that, what energy do you use to create the cold and warm?
Propane for the warmth and electricity for the cooling.
Uh-huh, okay. And what, so are you going to continue to be using the propane and the electricity for the?
We hope to move away from fossil fuels altogether. And we would like to move towards a more efficient system, probably ducted mini-splits would be, at least that's one thing that has been recommended to us by some of the solar people so that we could get a greater efficiency in both heat, well, the cooling might be similar to what we have now, but the heating would be substantially better than resistance heating. And we would be using then no fossil fuels.
I'm, I'm not real clear on the engineering of mini-splits. Probably my colleagues here can help on that. But if you're going to move to that, couldn't you have the kinds of units that provide both heating and cooling and get rid of that ugly ductwork altogether?
Well, we are thinking in terms of the kinds of units that provide heating and cooling. But in order to distribute the heat across our moderately large space with funny angles and shapes, it's been recommended that ducts are a better choice than trying to have multiple units, each with their own output in a different part of the room. So we would get rid of the current ducts perhaps, and certainly the current heating plant. But we would still have a system of ducts to distribute the heating and cooling from the mini-split units.
You couldn't manage one mini-split on one side of the bedroom and one mini-split on the other side upstairs?
We were told, I mean, there's still the bathroom and the walk-in closet. And we were told that three maybe, but four would be more likely. And they thought ducts was a better choice.
Insulation, what kind of insulation are you planning?
I would favor loose fill cellulose, although loose fill fiberglass is also a strong contender in my view. They are among the most effective in terms of cost per, our value per the total insulation. And they allow very, very good insulation if you have the space to put them pretty deep. They're about seventy percent the insulation per inch as foam. But if we have the, the option of this pitched roof, then we have the space to build up the depth so that we could quite affordably get very good insulation values.
Then the shading issue. In the front of the house, it's sort of like three different facades rather than just one. And the, one sort of south-facing, one southwest-facing, and one due west-facing, it looks like, that must be hot in the summer.
Yes, and that's our biggest and most beautiful view is through this giant picture window that faces the very hot sun.
And have you considered the possibility of a portal in front of that gorgeous view that you could sit outside of an evening and watch the sunset, but have the windows shaded from that sun?
Well, I think that would be, if we're unable to have the roof that we want and the overhangs, which would provide exactly what you suggest in terms of the portal-like shading and seating area. If we can't do that, then a portal that, that does nothing of the other advantages that we're looking for would indeed be a good choice.
Okay, thank you. I think your builder has a help on that one.
Yeah, as, as an architect, I don't know how a portal would be structured up on the second floor bearing on a first-floor roof that's forty-five years old and made out of adobe, you know? It, it doesn't seem like, you know, the, the vigas that are there now are sagging. Obviously weren't designed for deflection. So I don't, I don't know how a port, a port, any portal, the columns would have to go through the first-floor roof down and have their own footings in the ground. And they'd, they'd end up going through the middle of the kitchen and the living room. I, I don't see how that would work at all, honestly.
I bet you you could figure it out.
I've thought about it extensively, I really. One other thing I would like to say is the, the twenty-nine-foot, four-inch dimension that I just heard is the first time I've heard that. And I, and I understand, I think, where it comes from. It's, it's the maximum height plus ten percent variance plus the three foot for the panels, if I'm not mistaken.
That's right.
And if that was a maximum height, they would be able to build to, you know, it may not be the optimum thirty-five degree, but with some futzing of the panels, they may not be in the same plane as the roof. I, I think.
The maximum roof height is, the maximum roof height is twenty-six, four.
Yeah, I understand.
You can go higher with panels, but not with the top of the roof.
Yeah, I was, I was offering an opinion that if, if we were allowed to bring the maximum roof height to twenty-nine, four, that I think it would achieve ninety percent of what they want. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay. One, one further question on the solar panels. I would think, and I don't know whether you asked, that panels that track the sun, tracking panels, and I think you have some, don't you?
We have two-axis trackers up near the.
Are they quite a bit more efficient?
They're said to be roughly forty percent more efficient. But on the other hand, the trackers add about forty percent to the cost. So you end up with something of a wash in that case. But we chose to go with them because we wanted to be as efficient as we could be.
Yeah, okay. So that also is an alternative to the panels, not just on the south-facing first-floor roofs, but also tracking panels on the ground?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, that's all I have.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Shepherd?
I want to go back to the solar since our first conversation, I didn't realize you already have ground-mounted solar with tracking. So how much and what is it used for?
We have a nominal ten KW of solar panels. It's used to run the house and we have a woodworking workshop that probably consumes a higher-than-average amount of electricity for those, compared to those who don't have a woodworking hobby. We have not kept up with our use a hundred percent. For a while, we were a little ahead, but we have not been ahead during the time, most of the time that those trackers have been in place. We don't attain, of course, the full ten KW of generation. That's a nominal peak. And so our actual generation is, is at a lower level. We have purchased an electric car and so our consumption has just increased noticeably because of that. And so the new panels, we hope, would take care of the electric car and the heating and cooling needs of the house that we hope to move towards with new heating equipment.
You have, what, two posts and, with trackers and a number of, of solar panels on each post?
Yes.
And are they expandable?
So far as I know, they are not. We, I misspoke though, we have three posts. One of them is quite tiny, and then the other two are fairly large. And the way the structure is built, I think a substantial amount of, all of the bracing and arms and supports and mass and things would all have to be replaced in order to expand them.
But it might be more cost-effective than roof mount if you take a look at the numbers?
It might be. There's also a question of wind loading. I don't know whether they engineered the posts and support in a way that could take the added wind loading of a large, much larger number of panels on the trackers. And I don't know if the tracker hardware, the motors themselves, could handle moving the trackers against the force of winds on the days where wind is an issue. But we could find out about that.
That's all, thank you.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Okay, I, I have a couple. If this, these variances, the variance you're asking for, if it was, if it was to be approved, I was, I was looking at a, at a letter or the meeting you had with the neighbors. And one of the neighbors was asking about the color of the roof and, and the location of the panels. So what I'm wondering, if, if this variances, variance is approved, would you be willing to accept as a condition that, as conditions that the, the color of the roof would be non, the roof would be non-reflective? And the solar panels would be located on the side of the, of the, the side of the proposed structure, not facing number ten and number twelve Dutch road?
Certainly, as far as the second question, I don't really know what it means to be non-reflective in terms of a roof, but I suspect we can accept that.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I would guess it would be colored like most of our neighbors' roofs are and they're.
That's one option.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. There's no, there's no other questions? I need to open this up for a public hearing. Anybody out there that wants to speak in favor or against this?
Thank you very much.
You may have a seat.
For the time to listen to me, I really appreciate you granting me that amount of time and that level of detail.
Thank you. There is no one here, appears to be no one here to, wants to talk for or against it. I'm going to close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the commission? What's the pleasure of the commission?
Any discussion? Mr. Katz?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I would find that there are a large number of alternatives that would not require these variances. There are alternative materials for insulation, there are alternatives to replacing the current heating system or air conditioning system, I forget which one, that they're planning to replace anyway that would allow them to get rid of the ductwork on the roof and make putting rigid insulation there much easier to do. That there are alternative ways to shade the west-facing windows in the second floor with a portal or other shade device that could go to the parapets and not be on the top of the roof below, as far as the supports of the portal or shade structure there. And that there are numerous alternatives for the solar collectors on the first-floor roofs, on poles, to be yet more efficient with tracking devices. And so with those findings, I would like to make a motion, if I can-
Mr. Chair? I mean, Frank?
And I would move to follow the recommended decision from the hearing officer and deny the application for the exceptions to go to that height.
I second that.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion, I mean, the, the variances are denied. Thank you for coming before us. Next case, case number SVAR 18-5220, Phyllis Perry variance. Nathan, you're on this one too? Please proceed whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On December 13th, 2008, this application was presented to the hearing officer for consideration. The hearing officer recommended approval of the four variance requests by the applicant as memorized in the findings of fact and conclusion of law written order. Both staff and the hearing officer recommend approval for all variances requested from the applicant, subject to the conditions as contained in the report. The hearing officer found that the evidence presented by the applicant for the variance request established and met all the variance criteria for the Sustainable Land Development Code. At the hearing officer meeting, the applicant and the applicant's engineers stated that they had some concerns regarding some of staff's recommendations, condition 3, 5, 10, and 11. Staff has revised these conditions as contained in the report and has left the conditions pertaining to fire emergency access and road improvements to be at the recommendation and discretion of the Santa Fe County Fire Marshal. The Santa Fe County Fire Marshal completed a site inspection after the hearing officer meeting and has provided an updated aerial showing approximate turnout and turnaround locations for the project that's on exhibit 19. The final locations of these turnarounds and turnouts will be discussed and designated during construction by the fire marshal and the applicant. Staff would like to better reflect the comments and add clarification regarding road improvements per the fire marshal's recommendation from the aerial provided. Staff recommends that the planning commission modify condition 8 to state, the road width from the intersection of State Road 34, 30, sorry about that, the road width from intersection State 344 and Lower Mountain Road to be the, to the driveway intersection on Mariposa Road shall be a minimum of 12 feet wide with vehicle turnouts and turnarounds as approved by the fire marshal. The driveway beginning at the intersection of Mariposa through the applicant's property shall be a minimum of 14 feet wide with turnouts and turnarounds as approved by the Santa Fe County Fire Marshal. Mr. Chair Gonzalez may enter the remaining conditions into the record as stated in the report.
Yes, you may.
I now stand for any questions at this time, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Does the commission have any questions of staff? JJ?
I've got a couple of questions. I read the, the report, and we had a, I think we had conditions on, on condition 3, or we had questions on, on conditions 3, 5, 10, and 11. And upon reading, reading the discussion from the hearing officer and subsequent information that the applicant provided, were conditions 3, 5, 10, 11 satisfied the staff requirements?
Commission member Gonzalez, staff has agreed to remove condition 3 of the original presentation from the hearing officer. That was the condition regarding guardrails along the driveway. The applicant's engineer has provided an updated diagram of the proposed cut. I believe that's going to be exhibit 18 in your packet, NBB 40. Staff has reviewed that and determined that guardrails will not be required for this project, so that will-
What about condition 5?
Condition 5, if I'm not mistaken, pertained to the fire department-
That was the license contract.
Oh, the license contractor, yes. The intent on that was for the engineer to be present during these steep cuts presented with this project, in particular, the 24-by-80-foot cut and all other cuts exceeding 10 feet. We would like the engineer on-site for those cuts to supervise and make sure it's done.
But you agreed that the engineer didn't have to be on-site all the time, that he would just-
Yes, we revised that condition and is now revised-
You revised that.
revised in the report, that he only needs to be present during the significant cuts and not the entire construction.
And then what about condition number 10?
Condition 10?
That was the, the turnarounds of the fire marshal.
Yes. There again, we are going to have that at the fire marshal's discretion. We have approximate locations per the exhibit provided to you. The fire marshal designated those with the natural topography of the land and the site inspections that were conducted. They will ultimately be designated during construction, but the, the aerial provided does show approximate locations of where those need to be.
So it went from exactly 500 feet to an approximate of between 500 and 600 feet?
Yes.
Give them a little leeway on that?
Yes, that's per the fire marshal. I don't know if he'd like to speak for that, but basically, due to the terrain, to put an exact number at 500, it could further disturb slopes, and we'd like to put them in naturally occurring-
I don't want to interrupt you, but I would like the fire marshal to come and address that.
Absolutely.
He sits here for a long time, and we want, want to hear him give us an explanation.
You're so kind, JJ. I used to do that to Buster.
Mr. Chair, Planning Commissioner JJ Gonzalez, he, he is more eloquent than me, though, but, but could you please repeat your question?
Yeah, the, the question was that at first, it was required that turnarounds, turnouts be every 500 feet, and they kind of came back and said, maybe at 500 feet, it wasn't feasible there, so you allowed them to do it within 500 feet, approximate.
That is correct.
That was the whole, and that was due, I guess, to terrain problems.
Mr. Chair, Planning Commissioner Gonzalez, that is correct. Originally, when we, when the fire, the plan reviewer, fire inspector sent that letter to, back to land use, he gave them an approximate number just because we didn't know exactly what the terrain looked like. And once we did a site visit, I realized that there was some areas that were already naturally occurring where they could have that turnout. Also, we looked, we took into consideration slope, curvature of the road, we took into consideration line of sight, so some areas are going to be less than 500 feet and some areas maybe more than 600 feet, but ultimately, it's going to serve the fire department's purpose.
Okay, that's good. And the slope of the driveway is like a 3,100-foot driveway. Now, the fire marshal says it can exceed 15%. Are there areas in that area, in that driveway that they exceed 15%? Or are you satisfied with the way they designed it?
Mr. Chair, Planning Commissioner Gonzalez, I believe that there's some areas that are in excess of 15%, and the driveway cannot exceed 15%.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Mr. Fire Marshal, stay up, stay up there, I have a question for you, now that you're up there. Will the fire department be able to respond to, to an emergency at this location? And if not, what are the liability, what would the liability be if not?
We, Mr. Chair, we should be able to respond to an emergency in this location if they build the driveway the way we are requiring it. And another reason why they are required to have a sprinkler system is because potentially a tanker may not be able to make it up there, but an ambulance or a brush truck should be able to make it up there in case there's a medical emergency.
So the house will be required to be sprinkled?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions of staff? I have a couple. Okay. Okay, a question I have, would approval of these proposed variances be acknowledging the bill, the billable envelope as shown?
Yes, the site in particular is interesting. It's a bench, if you will, steep, levels off, and then there's a hill along it as well. The area which they're proposing, you can see on the slope analysis, does show that it's fairly flat where they plan on building the residence, and staff has determined that that is the best buildable area for the site. It's basically the only flat part of the site.
Okay. And the reason I'm bringing these up, these questions, is because I, I have concerns of, when you, when you approve a driveway before the house, you know, it's kind of, kind of odd. You want to usually build, approve a buildable area before the, before the roadway, or at the same time. So another question I have, is the site visible? No, I'm sorry. Has staff seen a copy of the house and floor plans?
There again, we have not. We, similar to the previous case, we do not want to put the owner through that expense. The owner has agreed to a 14-foot high, height restriction with a flat roof and an 18-foot on a pitch. No preliminary plans have been submitted to staff at this point.
One, one concern that I have is that, okay, we approved this driveway, and it goes up to the top, and it goes up to the elevation, to a certain elevation, the top of the hill. I'm concerned that we, that, once we have that road done, if they want, if they want to come out and dig down and dig out and take off the top of the hill, so I'm really concerned, I would like to tie, I would like to tie the top of the, the elevation of the end of the driveway to, to the finished floor of the house within 12 to 15 inch, 12 to 18 inches.
Mr. Chair Gonzalez, if that's to your discretion, you may condition that as an approval condition.
Has there been any discussion about that previously, about the, about where the, where the finished floor is going to be in relation to the elevation of the end of the driveway?
Not by staff, because there again, we just have an approximate location of buildable It is tucked far away from the ridge line itself, so I don't think we've had that discussion.
Maybe the engineer can elaborate more on that after a while.
Absolutely.
Okay. Let's see. Is this application going to require trees for screening the driveway? Or would that only, would it only apply to a ridge-top lot?
Mr. Chair, that would only apply to a ridge-top lot, correct.
Okay, answer my own question, thank you. Another question I have, are we, are we practicing putting in cisterns in Lou's Pond, in Louva Pond? I noticed that the applicant is showing two cisterns, I don't, I don't see any, any ponding area for the, usually what, what we did in the past is we'd have the, you'd have the, the, the ponding required for under train management, and then you have the cistern separately. So I have questions about that.
Mr. Chair, that's correct. They, they are required to install the cistern, and then a pond would be for any overflow from the cistern.
So I guess my concern would be, would be, would be is that if, if there's a 100-year storm event and the cisterns are full, there's some, there's somewhere where the water can go to, to comply with a 100-year storm event?
Mr. Chair, when they submit the application for the actual permit, then they will be required to design detention ponds in addition to the cisterns, and at that time, we'll look at the calculations to make sure that, that there's capacity.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Okay. Is the applicant ready to make his presentation? Please come forward.
Mr. Chair, commissioners, my name is Don Briggs. I'm the principal of Don Briggs Engineering, and I'm assisting Phyllis Perry here with a site development plan for her property in the San Pedro Mountains. It is a fairly difficult property, as you've probably seen from the slope analysis that's presented in your packet there. We had a fairly difficult time picking a road alignment. We actually looked at four different alignments, and, and the one that we came up with does have a significant cut in order to meet the fire department's requirement for the 15% grade. There are additional issues with the roadway in that there's a drainage channel that runs right alongside the roadway, so we are proposing a small channel to keep that water out of the road. The road's about 3,100 feet long, and so it's, it's not short, it's going to be expensive. And however you, we've worked through the process with staff, and, and I believe they've come up with a, okay, is that better? I'm sorry. So we've worked through the process with staff, and, and I believe we've come up with a, a site plan that the Perrys can work with, with the proposed variances in place that we have requested. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay. Does the commission have any questions of the applicant? Nope. Okay, I have a few questions. I noticed that you, that you submitted a drainage narrative, which is pretty good, but I would like to see an overall grading and drainage plan, including the roadway, identifying the locations of your proposed improvements, also indicating locations of roadway section transitions such as crowns and superelevations by stationing. I mean, what you, what you submitted is pretty good, but I don't see, if I was an inspector, I have a hard time inspecting the locations where those areas would be at.
Perhaps I can explain that to you, why that's not actually in there. There are cross-sections on the plan and profile for the road. However, there is essentially one typical cross-section, and the reason I did that is because most of the flow that crosses or gets to this road is overland flow, there's no arroyos essentially that cross this road. And so I'm proposing to have that water just continue overland across the roadway, so there's no crown, no bar ditch on the upstream side, no bar ditch on the downstream side. If there are areas that, that will require that, and, and there is in the cut area, we'll have to have bar ditches there because of the amount of water that's going to come down through that, that cut, and, but that will eventually get into the, the small channel that we're proposing. So- So if you look at the cross-section that I have, I just have a 2% cross slope.
You're talking about Exhibit 18?
I'm not sure what the exhibit number is in your packet. It's the plan and, well, no. On the plan and profile, there's a typical cross-section. On the upper right, so let's see if I have it here.
Mr. Chair, I believe it's in Exhibit 4.
Yeah, I see it. Okay, continue.
And so that's essentially what I'm proposing, is to just get the water across the road in an overland flow manner and not concentrate it.
Okay, if you do that, isn't the water going to erode the surface, the road surface?
No.
I don't understand your concept.
The concept is that the water stays shallow and does not gain velocity. So it continues as a shallow flow across the road. If you put a bar ditch in and collect it and concentrate it, then you have to do culverts and things like that, and that's, you know, I've walked the road and looked at the surveys and stuff, and I think this would be a good opportunity to actually do this, because there are no really concentrated flows that impact the road at this point in time.
But you have a 15% grade coming down the road, you're going to have some drainage coming down both ends of the road, down the middle of the road, or if there's bar ditches now, you're going to have the water coming down.
As long as the road does not stop the flow of water crossing it, it won't get concentrated. It will continue just across the road. It'll go down the road also, but it, I don't believe it'll be erodible velocity.
Yeah, I do have concerns about that, and I mean, I don't see a geotactical report. The drainage narrative does not mention of the 15% grade or any mitigation efforts to stabilize, control or slow down the stormwater, check dams, all the basic engineering procedures.
Well, and the reason that's not in there is because I'm hoping the water will just, you know, not have to be concentrated. If it has to be concentrated, then you'll have to have bar ditches and check dams. That makes the disturbance larger because of the bar ditches and, you know, just causes additional problems. If you look at the road now, it is very similar to what I would propose, although of course it's all rocks, but...
I mean, if there's a lot of rock out there, it's going to, the impervious surface is going to add a lot more runoff before it percolates as well. I really do have concerns about this plan. Let's go on to another question I have, I don't want to... So I guess based on that section, you were talking about the surface of the roadway is going to be six inches of base course, correct?
Correct.
Why was the cabin not shown on the proposed engineering plans? Curious.
The home site has not been developed yet. In talking to the client, she is thinking of a single-story slab-on-grade home, probably around 2,000 square feet. But there is no design yet for it. They're just hoping to get through this process to see if they're actually going to be able to build.
So is the, what difference in elevation are you thinking about with the end of the driveway and the finished floor of the house?
I haven't actually looked at the, well, the driveway is right, it's about 7,800 feet, and also that the home site is at 7,800 feet. So there's, there'll be just very little difference, I think. So I don't think they're proposing to elevate or excavate. It's just kind of a standard home site.
So also without a soils report, you're not really sure if you're going to have to overexcavate for the pad as well, correct?
That's correct. Again, we're hoping to get this approval, which requires a soils report as a condition of approval. Once we get this, we'll go ahead with that work.
Any thing else from anybody here? No? Okay. I need to open up the public hearing. Anybody out there want to speak for or against this project? I don't see anybody out there, so I'm going to close the public hearing. And what's the pleasure of the commission? Mr. Katz?
I would like to note how much I appreciate the work staff did on this, worked with the applicant. It was very pleasing to see that the issues came up and staff worked through them, and I'd like to thank staff for that and compliment the applicant for working with staff so well.
All right. Any discussion from the commission? Any, Nathan?
Mr. Chair Gonzalez, staff would just like to clarify condition one. I think it would alleviate a lot of the concerns that you have as far as the geotechnical. The way it's stated right now, it's an alternative in lieu of retaining walls. I don't know if you want a discretion and condition that a geotechnical be provided, because right now the way it's conditioned, it is an alternative.
Yeah, I mean, if we were to approve this, I'd probably want to put some condition where I would like to maybe add in Exhibit 18 as a condition of approval, because I want that done. I like that, I like that section. I do have concerns again about the lack of a crown or lack of a superelevation on the road section, but yes.
Wanted to bring that to your attention, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do we have any motions, discussion from the commission on this project? Okay. I will make a motion. I would like to make a motion on case number SVAR 18-5220 to table for more information. And specifically on some of the issues I mentioned today, I'd like to see more engineering on this roadway. I really have heartburn trying to approve a driveway without a buildable site. In the past, I've had issues where, I think Paul was with me, when Project REAP approved the driveway, and then when we approved the driveway, then the property owner came and said, well, you approved that driveway, now we get this buildable site right over here at the end of the driveway. So I want to avoid issues like that. Mr. Katz, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I'm a little puzzled because from looking at the top graphic map, it looks like there is this flat area right at 7,800 feet, and that's where the driveway ends up, and that's where the house is going to end up, so I'm not seeing the problem is my problem. Okay?
Mr. Chair, we've gone out to the side and we feel that the driveway will end very close to finished floor of the structure. We're fairly confident of that. The only deal that, the only heartburn I would have is we don't know what kind of soils are there, so if there were to be some overexcavation, I mean, we don't know that without a soils report, but from what we've seen from the preliminary walkthroughs, they appear to be within a foot.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else have any input? I'll tell you what, being that said... Well, let me finish. I'll take, I'm going to retract my motion, and I'm going to make a motion for approval with all the conditions, but I'd like to add a couple of conditions. I would like to add a condition that the end of the roadway and the finished floor of the house should be, the elevation should be within a foot to 18 inches. I would also like to see some plans, an overall grading and drainage plan, including the roadway, identifying the locations of the proposed improvements on the drainage narrative, also indicating locations of the roadway section transitions such as crowns and superelevations by stationing. I'd also like to add a condition, I think that's already, let's see, I'd like to add a condition to provide a geotechnical, is that on, is that number one already? Geotechnical report? No, okay, so I'd like to, condition to write a geotechnical report with additional mitigations, maybe some check dams in the bar ditches where the 15% slopes are at. And last of all, I'd like to add a condition, accepting Exhibit 18 as like a boilerplate, but with the exception of the roadway cross slope, which will vary from crown to superelevation. Does that make sense to you guys?
If you could repeat that last Exhibit 18 one, I wasn't clear on...
Yeah, I'd like to have Exhibit 18 as a condition of approval. I like that section. The only thing I don't agree with is the roadway cross slope.
So Exhibit 18 will be, I guess, constructed as is, with the exception of the crown or the superelevation of the road?
Correct, correct. More for, what I like about it is the, what I like about the best about that is the cut slopes and the way they're putting the retaining walls on there. I like that. And then I would just, let's see... Also like, Vicki, I have this note I put over here, clarify all proposed variances. Granting of these variances does not exempt the two-to-one cuts or three-to-one fills required by the code.
Mr. Chair, you say you want to add that as a condition, or you're...
Yeah, let's add that as a condition.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Shepherd?
Were there any of the additional conditions you proposed that require review by the board before approval, or are you suggesting that the staff can approve it as part of the conditions?
I'm suggesting that staff can approve it as part of the condition, as part of the, when the permit comes in. Does that make sense?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I think we're clear.
Okay. Do I have a second on my motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so it passes with the conditions and the additional conditions. Thank you for coming. Petitions from the floor. Communication from the commission members.
Yes. I would like to welcome our new commissioner, J.J. Gonzalez. It's nice to have you back up here.
I appreciate the expertise there, buddy.
I would like to thank the committee members, the commission members for accepting me, and I would like to thank staff for their wonderful work that they've been doing and continue to do that good work. And I like the fact that we have a hearing officer that has made some good decisions. I read his information and his approval, and I think it's kind of helpful. Some of the decisions other hearing officers did, I wasn't really in agreement with, but the ones I read this time, I think we could agree with that, and it's helpful to have them give us some direction, some recommendations. Thank you, staff.
Thank you.
Mr. Shepherd?
A question for staff. Our two departing members from last year, Commissioner Anaya and Commissioner Gray, do you send out some type of acknowledgement thanking them for their service, appreciative of what they did?
Mr. Chair, Commission Member Shepherd, yes, we do. We actually send out a letter and a certificate of appreciation, which we're working on, and we should be getting that out tomorrow.
Thank you. And I'd also like to thank staff for bearing with me in my first year as chairman. I'm learning as I go along, sometimes I forget, but I'll keep trying. Communications from the attorney.
Mr. Chair, members, I have nothing other than welcome to the new member, and I could tell you've been here before. And also, I would just add, you may have noticed, you see different attorneys in this chair. We do rotate, but I will endeavor to communicate to the attorney that worked on the order that was sent back, any concerns. So I'll check in with Mr. Katz to make sure I have his issue clarified.
All right, thank you. Matters from Land Use staff.
Mr. Chair, the BCC has not taken any additional action on land use cases since the last planning commission meeting, so I don't have any updates for you today. One thing I did want to bring up also is that at the last meeting, Mr. Chair, you requested a copy of the draft update to the DCI section of the SLDC, which includes the mining regulations.
Yes.
So I've got a copy of the draft here. It's in the process of public review right now, so by the time this comes back to the planning commission, probably around March, it's probably going to change significantly.
Okay.
Or it could change.
Could change.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll hand that out to you now.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Paul?
No.
Anything, sure? Okay. Next planning commission regular meeting is February 21st, 2019, and after that, I need a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Do I got a second?
Second.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.